When life gets hard and our thoughts get too much to bear, finding the resiliency within us can help us find healing. The 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free support for anyone in suicidal distress or emotional crisis. All texts and calls are anonymous and connect you to local resources that uphold cultural values and pave the way to healing. Find the strength within you. Find the strength within our culture. Reach out if you need help today.
It takes a team effort to ensure a successful future. That's why King Insurance Agency and Grinnell Mutual are celebrating the accomplishments of student athletes across every sport. They recognize the dedication it takes to work and play hard. Your display of teamwork makes it easy to trust in tomorrow. Contact Leslie, Hurley, or Blake King, your local Grinnell Mutual agents, at 605-997-3729 for all your insurance needs. Trust in Tomorrow is a registered trademark of Grinnell Mutual Reinsurance Company.
The innocence of youth. Is there anything any better? But soon they'll be in high school and facing all the same challenges you faced. How to make friends? How to fit in? How to be cool? We want our children to have everything they'll need to live fulfilling and productive lives. Make sure the kids in your family are among the more than 57,000 participants here in South Dakota who take part in high school sports or activities.
When it comes to advertising, reaching the right market while giving back to the school is just plain right. If you're looking for an effective method that reaches a large fan base at once, then here's your ticket with Live Ticket TV. With over 90 schools in the state of South Dakota, we can help you advertise locally with just your home team or reach the region. Plus, a portion of all sales go directly back to the school. Get ahold of Heath Nimkey today and let's get started in building your brand with Live Ticket TV.
Agriculture is like no other business, which makes Farm Credit Services of America like no other lender. Owned by the farmers and ranchers we serve, our customers have a voice in how we work, a stake in what we do, and share in our success. Discover a lender that works for you at Farm Credit Services of America.
If you're in need of an electrician, you can count on Patriot Electric for all your electrical needs. We have a dedicated team of professionals that provide quality service and installations on every project. We have more than 100 years of combined experience and knowledge in all aspects of the electrical trade, whether you're trenching, bucket truck, generator, lighting, residential, commercial, industrial, and farm projects. You can count on us to get the job done. Call Patriot Electric at 605-997-3536 or stop by and see us at 209 East Second Avenue.
Do you have a pest problem? Gut bats, ants, termites? Family-owned and operated, Olson's Pest Technicians have had over 50 years' experience taking care of pest problems in places across South Dakota, Nebraska, and Iowa. Utilizing brilliant methods such as Centracon bait stations for termites and Vicane treatment for bedbugs, there's no pest too tough for Olson's Pest Technicians. If you have pest problems, call 800-KILLBUGS.
One size fits all? That may be good enough for the other guy, but it's not good enough for you. With LG Seeds, we'll work together to face whatever obstacles. Weather, insects, field conditions, it's always changing, but we make sure your next step's the right one, and that's something that never changes. When the stakes are this high, it comes back to preparation. Plan your moods and count on results. LG Seeds, we mean business.
Out here, you learn that to keep growing, you have to keep changing. CHS and the farmers and ranchers we serve know all about change because together, we've changed agriculture. That's why we're the largest farmer-owned cooperative in the country. So farmers own the system they count on with advantages at every step. From innovative tools that help crops grow, to grain processing expertise, to energy solutions, we create connections to empower agriculture. Learn more at chsinc.com.
Welcome to Bowie Foods at Al's Oasis Plaza. My great-grandfather, Gus Bowie, opened the first store in 1905. I'm R.F. Bowie, the president of Bowie Foods. We aren't your typical store. You'll find everything you need for your family. You'll save money, and I promise, you're going to enjoy your grocery shopping experience. We carry a lot of locally-produced products and some things you just aren't going to find anywhere else. South Dakota-owned, family-owned, Bowie Foods.
This is what matters. This is beyond X's and O's. This is the difference mutual respect makes. This is what character looks like. This is what defines us in South Dakota. This is sportsmanship. School sports, it's not the outcome that matters most, but the way the games are played. This message presented by the South Dakota High School Activities Association and the South Dakota Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association.
CoreCares helps individuals stay at home by offering caregiving, nursing, and medical alert systems in over 55 communities in South Dakota. Specializing in tasks like bathing, meal prep, and medication setups, our well-trained staff delivers exceptional care. We invest in our team through customized training and comprehensive benefits. To learn more about job opportunities or services, visit our website at CoreCares.com. CoreCares, proudly serving our community.
...that will be taking place tomorrow, as well as a couple of other things for PBIS program. Again, parent-teacher conferences tomorrow night. Be nice to be able to visit with parents, guardians, and how kids are progressing. We'd also have some students participating with Ms. Fisher, some middle-school students with Laurel and Turp. A couple of dates for you are 5 through 12. Pops concert will be October 27th here in the elementary gym. And picture retakes are also on the calendar for October 29th. So lots of things taking place, and we look forward to seeing how they turn out.
Okay, I really only have one thing to add. If you turn towards the end of your packet, you'll see I shared some enrollment information with you. Last Friday in September was the official count day for all public schools in the state of South Dakota for state aid purposes. And Flanders Public School, with elementary, middle school, high school, and all of our students, we, our count is 693. Last fall, Mr. Cleveland and Mr. Weber projected 688, so it's nice to come in over that projection. The way that'll affect state aid is this fall, we will receive that 688 state aid number, and then starting in the spring, it will transition to 693, and that's what we'll get in the spring and then again in the fall. So we'll get a little bit more money in the spring, which is nice. And it's always nice to be on that side of projections. I have been on the other side where we get a little less state aid in the spring, so that's why we try to be conservative there. I was able to find some Moody County, well, actually all county, birth records. Originally through 2022, I did find 23 and 24. I did not add those to this report. That do show the county birth rates did increase post-COVID, which was interesting. And knowing that we have other school districts that occupy parts of Moody County, kind of looking at some of the data of our birth years that attend Flanders, the formula I kind of came, I settled on was about 67% of students born in any calendar year eventually attended Flanders Public School. So with that formula in mind, I put together these projections. We will know a lot more this spring when we do kindergarten roundup. And from there, hopefully kind of fine-tune that formula a little bit, knowing that we do have some districts around us that are also growing. So how that affects our enrollment, a little bit remains to be seen, but I feel pretty confident that our enrollment will stay as is. I also included on this report where I believe our South Dakota Activities Association numbers will be. They both, the boys enrollment, which is only used for football classification, and then our total 9 through 11 enrollment, which is used for all other activities, we will stay in Class A and Class 11B for those sports. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but that's really all I have for tonight.
All right, thanks for the answers from Ed. Next is disclosure and conflict of interest. Not at this time?
Not at this time, no.
All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Well, I added just a little bit of information on the surplus of used-away football jerseys. So I had some senior parents contact, both myself and Mr. Edlin, and they are getting some old football jerseys that we were just having in storage and maybe going to sell for $5 a piece, we were able to at least get $10 for them. And they embroidered the seniors' names on the back, so their corresponding numbers. So that was a neat senior night thing for them.
Yeah, that's a nice thing, because previously, they would never allow them to have them until they went into surplus the following summer. Which isn't every year either, it's every three, four, five years? Whatever at the county and city, we do it all together, so.
Right.
So that's kind of nice that we can do that for them.
Well, and the nice thing is it frees up some storage space because we have school districts our orders by trade, so getting out older stuff to hold on to some other old stuff is always good.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Cynthia, is there a second? Second by Destiny, another discussion? See none, all in favor signify with say a nine?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is new business, and it's the reading of some amending policies. We'll start with number 2002.
So I guess what I'm used to doing during these is just kind of giving a brief description of what the policy is, if it's something that we're adding as new, or in this case, what is changing, since these are amended policies that already exist in our policy book. Does that work for you guys?
It works wonderful.
Okay, so beginning with 2002, really the only change is the previous policy did not require a person who wants to serve on school boards to be a resident of our school district. So that seems like a very common sense thing to add. We want who wants representation on this board to be people of our district, so that's really the only change to 2002.
Okay. Do you want motions for each one separately?
So I believe each motion receives three readings, correct?
I think that was change two.
Okay.
I don't have my policy book with me tonight, so I don't know, I'm sure. That's what I came to talk to the day about, I forgot about.
Okay, okay.
I would like to bring up something on this policy, because I see it here, it was just because of us driving in. If we work at schools in general, how many school board members that have? I know five, seven, nine, and we've had seven a long time, but it seems like every time we have an election, we don't have people running, we have to fight, run, and I'm wondering, would we maybe have some competition, or would it be maybe, would it be better if we would have less or more members on our board rather than a seven-member board just to five?
Didn't it go to seven during COVID?
No, except for...
Yeah, that's true. But the process of getting it changed was, I mean, it's...
It is a process, and it actually would be voted on.
Like by who?
By our district.
Yeah.
By our patrons, so. And then, so let's say, so now the school elections are in June, it wouldn't come into effect until the following years, or like one calendar year later is when those changes would take place.
Well, what does anybody else think? I mean, I, it just seems like it's really hard to generate interest in being on the board compared to the past reason to go to five and first, but...
That was, the reason why we considered it was because we were having somebody, we couldn't find anyone to fill right spot. And that's why he approved it on another, at least another figure to try and find someone for that position. But I don't remember why, do you remember why it was seven?
It was just a good process of doing, yeah.
Because even Sue Balt only has seven.
Yeah, yeah. That's, my question was, are like, do the numbers vary a lot with schools our size as far as, or is it, I mean, to me, it seems like our population would be probably north of the five member, but I don't know. I mean, what is, what is...
With the high more, either...
So in Highmore, we had seven. With the smaller...
All at large, too?
Yeah, all at large.
Okay.
And we, I mean, yeah, so having this conversation is not new. We did two, but ultimately, we were still always able to fill it. So that's my experience with it.
I know in the last two elections, we've had to have people stay on because we don't have additional time because we do not have any more members.
Well, if we talk about it now, maybe we can get more of the public to discuss also, and we could revisit it, you know, continue to talk about it, we've got time, and see if there's more interest in if we want to change from a seven-member board down to a five or up to a nine-member board.
And I could use some research, too, to help answer to us this question about schools our size, or even schools in our area.
Yeah.
Easy research, yeah.
Okay, well, we can continue that conversation and maybe it'll get some people in the public district to also talk about it. And I guess the other questions are, are those the other ones you're looking at? Are they all at-large districts, not the other way? I can't think of the word right now. So I think did Chamberlain have to change, too? Representation?
Just quickly, we have a website policy. Generally, we practice the board to adopt or amend any policy after a same overdue that you have or special for me.
When we changed our policies, we didn't update a couple of years ago, I thought the change was from a three-year to one year. That's what some people have heard.
Motion by Dustin, second by Morgan, any other discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have policy number 3034.
3034, Mr. Cleveland, would you like to comment on it, or would you like just, you need to just say, so, okay, a lot of times when we, or every year when we do our school audits, our auditors oftentimes will come out with some tweets that they see need to happen in some of our policies. 3034 was one of those, and all that was, was adding intangible assets and subscriptions to the bottom line of the capitalization threshold of $50,000, so.
What would qualify as an intangible asset?
None. Check. Mr. Streis, does that work?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not sure if most of our microphones are on, that's, that's my fault. So, the, the audit, how this kind of came to be was, they were looking at our, all of our purchases that were greater than $50,000, and really, kind of the gist that I got from it was like a multi-year subscription. One of the products that, that had come from the 1003 School Improvement Grant was the Renaissance package, and all of the, the whole suite of the package was greater than $50,000, and it was a multi-year, multi-year contract. The reason that one didn't qualify was that is based on a per student package, but if any sort of subscription similar to that, that is not based on a per student, they would, they would like to see, you know, that capitalized, and I'm not entirely sure, I don't have a ton of experience with how that would be, how that would be assessed from year to year. I would definitely rely on the experts that need to help me, help me with that, but that's kind of the example that they gave me, was any sort of subscription that is multi-year and greater than $50,000, as long as it's not per student-based licenses.
Any other questions? See none, do we have a motion to approve the change to add those two words to the policy 3034 for capitalization?
Second.
Motion by Cynthia, second by Morgan, any other discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Okay, we're present. Okay, so next month, I'm going to break, come back with some more policy updates, just decided we didn't need to do a dozen of them at once, we'll just kind of go through them. Would you guys rather have them in the consent agenda, or do you like have them in the new business where we just go one by one, just like we did tonight? That work for everybody?
I think, yeah, since we, since it's only a one-time reading, I think it's good to verbally say it's a consent, so I think, same way we just did it.
Sounds good, okay.
Thank you. All right, so our next meeting is on Monday, November 10th, here at the Elementary Commons. I see nothing else, or do I see a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Dustin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cynthia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, good night.